Call the meeting to order for May 12th at 6:30 PM. The invocation will be from Father Michael Magnet, Meganal, from St. Stevens Martyr Church.
He's not here.
Let's go with Pastor Scott.
Pastor Scott, you're up.
bullpen.
Yes, invitation, please.
Dear God, thank you for this day, thank you for this time that we could gather together, Lord, to help this town to improve and to be better, Lord. We thank you for all these individuals, Lord, these council people, Lord, who want to make this town better. I pray for this meeting right now. Give them wisdom, give them direction. Thank you for all of those who serve us every day, our police departments, Lord, our fire departments, our EMTs, Lord, all our school teachers, Lord. Keep our schools safe, keep every one of our residents safe, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible)
Spann, Hardaway, Miano, Baron, Pettit, Widing, Garajek.
Here, present, five present. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Dorinda, we have a letter from Mr. Schutte.
Yes. Town of Maryville, I am requesting that the town council consider waiving permit fees regarding the renovation of the social center at Hidden Lake Park. I am hopeful you can add this to the council's agenda for the meeting's schedule for this evening.
Motion approved.
Second with conditions, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Spann, seconded by Mr. Pettit, with conditions on approval of a waiver of fees.
Obviously, as been our practice in the past, they'll still have to pay the inspector fees.
Right.
Right, Dorinda?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
There's a proclamation for Arbor Day. I don't know if we want to read that into the record, or we just want to go ahead and...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Baron for the approval of the proclamation for Arbor Day. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, accounts payable.
One second, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We missed, this is the final day for National Nurses Week. We missed that. You know, we have Spann's wife, the nurse, my wife, the nurse, Mrs. Baron used to be a nurse.
Right.
And we've had some nurses associated with the town in the past.
Right.
We've always recognized National Nurses Week, and somehow this was slipped by us. We had too much other stuff going on.
Right.
But I'd just like to get into the records that we do recognize that from May 6th through the 12th was National Nurses Week.
Certain.
That's all.
Consent agenda, accounts payable, registered voucher approval for May 12th, 2015, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for April 28th, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Baron, seconded by Mr. Pettit for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Mr. Spann.
Is that what we went over today, in the earlier meeting, 93rd?
The agreement, interlocal agreement for 93rd Avenue and Chase Improvement Project?
Um, I...
That's what's on the agenda.
What do we have it under? Oh, yeah, interlocal agreement for 93rd Avenue Chase Improvement Project. Everyone was given a copy of it, iSupply, everyone with a Google picture of where the project's actually going to be, if you're not familiar with it, it's going to be right behind, basically, the Lake County Government Complex. 93rd Avenue is currently a four-lane road, and that belongs to, and is within the city of Crown Point. Chase Street is a Town of Maryville Road. This is a Crown Point project that they're using federal funds for. They're going to get, it's an 80-20 split with them spending $20,000. They're going to do, basically, an intersection improvement project. They're going to install a roundabout there, and they're also going to install Trailhead. So you'll have Chase Street, 93rd, and the Trailhead all entering the roundabout. Anybody else is familiar with that area? The drainage in there is quite difficult, and that's all going to be taken care of through the project, and this is a zero cost to the town. The reason that they need this agreement is because they're probably going to be improving around 200 feet of Chase Street, just north of what the proposed roundabout is going to be.
Motion to approve, Mr. President. Bruce had me at zero cost.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit for the approval of the interlocal agreement on 93rd and Chase, and seconded by Mr. Hardaway. Any other discussion? Seeing none.
Something to say. This project directly affects my area, and it directly affects my bike trail, and I think the improvements are going to be absolutely awesome. And you're right, Bruce, the drainage on that road is a very bad, awesome, wonderful, yucky site.
Right, and that's going to solve a lot of problems.
Right, but I'm glad that we're going to have a Trailhead on the Crown Point side. We don't have it on the Maryville side, but it'd be close enough to where it's going to be buttoned up to the Maryville Trail, so it's, we're going to have bathrooms and it's going to be a good thing.
Right. It'll be really nice and stuff.
Oh, I think it's wonderful.
Anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else under public works, Mr. Spann?
Nope.
Council affairs, Mrs. Miano? Anybody have anything under council affairs? Seeing none, personal policy and employee benefits, Mr. Pettit?
No report.
Public safety, Mr. Widing, anybody have anything under public safety?
Just a comment in general, Mr. President, and Joe's not here, but between Lake County and our guys, unfortunately, we lost someone tragically up there at the apartments, but it sounds like our guys went above and beyond and have got suspects in custody, collaborative efforts, so.
Right.
Kudos to the Maryville Police Department again.
They did an excellent job on that. They've arrested four.
Four individuals?
Yeah, they've arrested four, and maybe a fifth. They've done a, you know, very unfortunate, you know, guys going to work and a bunch of gangbangers, you know, decided they wanted to take him out. But I agree with Sean, I pay you back on what he said. Our police department did an excellent job tracking those guys down and bringing them in to justice.
Yeah, that Major Crimes Task Force, I mean, they activate pretty quick.
Yep.
They come out and got it done. Anybody else under public safety? Seeing none, Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Miano? Ms. Orlich, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things. This Friday is our Arbor Day celebration. It starts at 10:00 AM. Mr. Spann will be reading the proclamation out there. I want to personally thank Lake Cutters, South County Landscape, and Hubinger. We've received five trees donated in total from each of those companies. Red Oaks, Paw Paw, and Cleveland Pears. Aquinas will be there, the third and fourth graders planting the trees, and we have other activities for them on Friday that they'll participate in. And it starts at 10:00, and it should be over somewhere about around 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. Second thing I have is Kevin and I drove the Erie-Lacawanna Trail today in CNO. We've chosen locations for the dogway stations. Two will be on Erie-Lacawanna, and three of them will be on the CNO, and hopefully those will be up this week or next week. That's all I have.
Anybody else under parks? Seeing none, environmental affairs, Matt's at the annual Stormwater Meeting. Anybody have anything under environmental affairs? Seeing none. Elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano? Anybody have anything? Economic development, Mr. Pettit?
Just briefly, Mr. President, we had an RDC meeting prior to this, and we awarded a contract to Walsh &amp; Kelly for the 79th Avenue Improvement Project, which is in the Lowes Culvers Costco Street, the intersection improvement at 79th and Mississippi. Will go to Walsh &amp; Kelly. I believe, Bruce, approximately $355,000.
That's correct. Anything else under economic development? Seeing none. Utility liaison, Mrs. Baron?
Yes, with the success of the cap program up and running, we're going to add another location on to, for a drop-off site, and that will be at the Parks Department. We will now store the caps in the North Barn?
Yeah, we're going to storm in the North Barn, and then we're going to use Public Works, Parks, and also...
The Public Works?
Just Parks and...
Parks and...
Okay.
And Stormwater.
For drop-off site, and then whenever they get to a point where they've got a full bag or need to get rid of their, they'll just give us Public Works a call, and they'll swing by and pick up the caps, and we'll store all of them up at the North Barn, get them out of everybody's way.
So the drop-off locations are going to be?
Be at the Parks Department and Stormwater.
And what about if they wanted to take them directly to the North Barn?
Well, there's somebody, there's now...
Somebody there, isn't there?
Somebody there, but there's not always somebody there.
Okay.
That's the whole problem.
All right.
It's a storage facility.
Okay.
And then, we not only accomplished getting three benches, but we've also accomplished getting seven more, so we've got a total of nine benches.
Very good. Do you know where they're going to go?
I don't know yet. I'm going to go through and make, go through the town and look at some of the parks and see which are the really heavily used parks, and then we'll go from there.
Anybody else under the utility liaison?
Yeah, I got something at 3110 West 60th Drive. There's a, looks like a pinhole leak or something. It looks wet, it's moist, all okay. I was wondering, who can I contact?
That Indian American, you think?
Yeah.
Bruce, you want to?
You're a contact person.
What I would do is, if you could give Public Works a call in the morning, they have the 800 number, they'll call, and then they can keep track of it.
Anything else under utility liaison? Seeing none, abandoned properties, Mr. Hardaway?
We got a couple of things going on. Thanks to Attorney Bishimi for, we've identified two more vacant homes in Georgia Heights area, 5401 and 5411, Marianne Lane. One's been empty for 10 years, the other one's two years, and he's contacted those, the asset companies for those two homes, as well as he's contacted, he's made contact with other people that we've asked to contact, the banks, and so we are just moving forward with that. The three lots that we had looked at, right there on the corner of Massachusetts and 58, that one sold in the auction, and the other two lots on Connecticut, they didn't sell. Mr. Bishimi's research and what we have to do in order to hopefully turn, gain access to those, so we can turn those over to Habitat for Humanities. So I appreciate everything that you've done thus far, John. We appreciate it, and if you could just continue, we'll stay in touch and keep moving, and also, Vicky should have emailed you some pictures for 5565.
In fact, I spoke with her yesterday. We're establishing regular contact now so that we've got communication from our law firm with Vicky.
That's great.
So that we're up to date on each of these properties.
That's great, we appreciate that. That property, 5565 Adams, is a home that was, it's not that old a home, it's not even 10 years old, I don't think, but it is mold written, and the floors inside have buckled, and it's just a horrible, it's a horrible home to be in that...
Councilman, we did, we got confirmation from that local Realtor rep that they have engaged a repair company to make those repairs.
Okay, well, that's all we want. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, general ordinance, ordinances, ordinance 1511, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the 2014 Geo Bond contractual of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year of 2015, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Baron for the approval of ordinance 15-11. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Yeah. Haraway?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, five to zero, motion approved. Second reading, ordinance 15-12, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, of the Town Council, of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, established hotel and motel safety occupancy.
Mr. President, members of the council, council members have, at their desk area, an amended version of ordinance 15-12. The caption reads at the very top, ordinance 15-12, comma, as amended. I request that the council adopt this amended version. At this point on second reading, the amendment is found on page three. It's the effective date. Doing research for this enforcement ordinance, we determined that under Indiana law, because we are imposing the potential of penalties to be levied before this ordinance can take effect, it has to be published by the town, and you'll see that the effective date provides that. The publication should occur within 30 days after passage, so if it's passed tonight, we'll make sure that it's published properly. It will then not be effective until the publication date, which in all likelihood will probably be in the month of June.
Motion approved. Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Spann for the approval of ordinance 15-12. Any other discussion? At this time, this is a second reading ordinance, I would open it up for public comment on Open it up for public comment on 15-12. Any public comment on 15-12? Seeing none, close the public comments section. Roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Yes.
Haraway?
No.
Baron? No.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution, resolution 15-12, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2015 budget within the Town Court Probation Fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Pettit for the approval of resolution 15-12. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. BZA action, do we have no BZA action? Old business, anybody have anything under old business?
I got one thing. We, two years ago, we talked about the Shared Ethics Committee. And I was asked to wait, and I've been waiting for two years. I'd like to...
I think that we should wait till the full council's here, and then, maybe we can move forward with it then, bring it up on the floor, and I know that we've talked about it before.
Well, I was just going to ask, request now that we bring Mr. Bellamy back to a workshop.
Okay.
So that we can get the particulars one more time.
Sure.
And before we make a final decision.
Sure.
That's all.
Okay. Just have to get everybody to the workshop, that's...
Right, get everybody to workshop.
Or bring them to a council meeting, even.
Well, either, either or.
Like, maybe do a half hour before the council meeting, or something like that.
That's just as good. Thank you.
And maybe we can get the costs that are associated with it.
Yeah, that's fine. I have those somewhere.
Okay. Maybe give them a call, and maybe we can have them before the next council meeting.
We have nothing scheduled before the next council meeting, that I'm aware of, so that would be a great time to do it.
Yeah, maybe give them an hour, I don't know how long he's going to, you'd have to ask him how long he's going to take.
Thank you.
Anything else under old business? New business? At this time, I see that Mr. Herzog and Mr. John Minor are in the audience. Mr. Herzog is the chairman of Lake County Solid Waste District Board, and our new representative of the Lake County Solid Waste is in the audience, Mr. John Minor. If everybody hasn't met him, stop by in the office and meet him. Anybody else under new business? Seeing none, at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the, for the record.
Thank you. My name is Robert Berger from 7038 Banfield Lane. I am requesting a temporary suspension of a business, of a contractor, Maryville contractor, due to improper work and failure to get proper light permits and inspections, which I paid for, and now I'm paying dearly for. May I explain? I have copies, Roger.
Well, I, not to interject, John, but I think contractor licenses have to go to the BZA. It's an administrative action, sir, which you're more than welcome to do in working with Dorinda Gregor and the attorney for the BZA Plan Commission, Bill Touche. John, I don't know, is that the proper channel? I mean, we can hear it by all means, Mr. Berger, but the actual authority to revoke a license is with the BZA.
He does have a license.
If he has a license, yeah, he may not even be licensed, Gene.
He's a licensed excavator, but not a licensed plumber. And he, I paid for a permit and inspection, neither was done, I have pictures of the shoddy work, and I have...
What did you have done?
I have my entire sewer replaced, from the house to the street.
To the street, through the yard?
Yes.
Okay.
And he informed me that he would pull the permits and have a licensed plumber and have it all inspected, and it wasn't, and now it's, the bedding was...
Hope isn't right?
The bedding wasn't put down properly, so the Conservancy District's pipe now is ca, and upon visual video inspection, you can see the standing water, and the pipe's now leaning toward my house, and he refuses to make good on it. And then when I went to talk to an attorney, I came here yesterday to get the copies of the permit, and he had never pulled the permit, and that, and there was never inspection.
Did MCD come out and inspect that before, when they made the tie-in?
They inspected their pipe.
And that, what I'm saying, to make, when they made their tie-in?
They inspected their pipe only.
Okay, but I'm saying, usually what, when they make a tap or whatever, they...
They were there for the...
MCD was there to inspect the tap, didn't they?
Correct, but not the bedding, and that should have been inspected and approved before the hole was filled back in.
Right.
I did all the interior work myself. I paid $800 for a plot of survey. I called Julie, had everything flagged. I had a licensed plumber, pulled all the permits, did all the inside work, had all my inspections done, exactly how the town instructed me to.
Right.
And I relied on him, based on a referral from MCD, that he knew what he was doing. And as you can see in the pictures, he does not know it. Somebody didn't know what they were doing. So...
John?
The matter should be, you can make a presentation, just as you did this evening, at the next public meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Dorinda, you can assist Mr. Berger with the...
It has to be legally advertised, we have to notify the contractor to appear, so it would be not at the next public meeting, it would be at the, June...
Good meeting, Fourth Wednesday in June.
Yeah, but you have to bring in that information so we can begin the paperwork.
Yeah, I would suggest that you go through that process there, and I'm sure that Dorinda can direct you, and then eventually it'll, it'll come back to...
We only have one more flood by June, out of the two-month period before it starts flooding again.
What about your telephone? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else under public comment?
Thank you very much.
Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Christopher Ellis, address 972 West 66th Avenue. I was just having a question about the park that's at the Steffic, I think it's Steffic Park over on Harrison. I was wondering about the tennis court and the basketball court. I was wondering who I'd talk to about getting a tennis court and a basketball court where kids can play on it, because I got kids, and, you know, they play out in the street right now, and where I stay is like a loop, and I just want to get off the street, because, you know, cars, they see the signs saying children playing, but the cars still be flying around that little curb right there, because I stay right there in the adjacent right there, and they still be flying down. I was just wondering about the park. I see you got the little park for the little kids and stuff. I was just wondering about the tennis court and like the basketball court, and then that sandlot where they got like a volleyball, and then they got like a baseball court in the back I seen over there, where I just wonder...
Our parks director is here, Jan.
Hi. How you doing? I'm not so sure that we're going to actually put basketball courts back at Steffic Park. We're actually looking at proposing some green space there. In the past, I believe that there was some issues with basketball courts. That true?
Yes. I don't know, I just moved there about two years ago, I'm new to the neighborhood, so I didn't know what...
Yeah, we've had a lot of problems with basketball courts and the older kids.
Oh, okay.
You know, giving the younger kids a hard time, and even before Mr. Hardaway and I got on the council 12 years ago, one of the previous councilmen had us take down the basketball courts throughout town because of all the problems they were having. And they never, there was never really a large demand, I think, to have them put back up, that I, that I'm aware of.
I was the police representative at the time.
Yeah.
And the problem was, wasn't our kids, we had kids come from other communities, and ask all that, and they're...
Yeah.
It wasn't our kids causing the problems.
Okay.
So when they decided, at that time, the council decided, you know, these kids, one part of the day, they decided to go and take away the basketball courts out.
Okay, so I can't get a tennis, well, tennis court at the same time, right?
You know, I was working on with families, we do, and that's our part.
Okay.
They're kind of looking, I think, we'll go to...
Yeah, you know what, you're probably better if you just sit down here and have a conversation with Jan sometime.
Okay.
She can explain to you, because she's our park director.
Okay.
She can explain everything that they might have planned for that park.
I'm at Prusen Park, we're there from 8:00 to 4:00. Anytime you want, anytime you want to stop in, I'd be happy to talk to you.
What park?
Prusen, right there on 57th and Tyler, straight off of 57th and Harrison, is the entrance. Anytime, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
What was your name?
Christopher Ellis.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Anybody else under public comment?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. My name is John Manier. I live at 2010 Dogwood Trail, Maryville, Indiana. It's great to be here, from sunny Arizona. I'm glad for the cooler temperatures. I came at the, I came at the right time, but I just want to, you know, thank the board members and also all of the councils. I'll be working throughout the year on several items that will impact the communities, and it'll be great working with all of you and the other communities as well. But any questions or even thoughts that you might have, I'd be happy to meet with any of you individually and discuss upcoming items. But we had a good first week. Last week was my first week here, and things are going well, and I think things are going to move very positively in the future, so thank you all very much, and it's great to have an office in the city. Thank you.
Great to have you aboard.
Anybody else under public comment? Seeing none, announcements, Plan Commission meeting is May 19th at 6:30 PM. Environmental Resource Committee meeting is May 21st of 2015 at 2:00 PM. Town Hall will be closed except for emergency services on Monday, May 25th, and in service of Memorial Day, and the next town council meeting will be May 26th at 6:30 PM.
Who announced, isn't the Fire Department doing something memorial?
I got a letter, yeah.
Memorial Day Parade this year is on Monday, on Memorial Day, at 10:30, and we're changing it up a little bit, we're going to leave from Town Hall and go north on Broadway and 73rd to the Memorial, 700 East, 73rd. Legion's involved, a little different memorial, or Patriot Guard, I believe, and a couple of groups similar to Patriot Guard. Boy Scouts are involved again. We're trying to bring it back a little bit, get it back to way history. Back when I was growing up, it was a lot bigger than what it is now, so we kind of wanted to bring it back a little bit, so we're going to have some Fire Departments there. After the... little bit, so I'm gonna have to put the Fire Department there, um, and after the parade, we're all going back to the American Legion and having another memorial service there for a police and fire department memorial.
Parade time, chief, again?
10:30 AM.
Nets a silent parade?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pettit for adjournment, returned.